Mr. Schmidt, Mrs. Jewen. Okay, so now I need a motion from someone to select a chair.
Madam Secretary, I nominate Pat Morrissey to be the Chair of this work session.
Second?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Okay. And then we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Morrissey? Or you probably have to not vote on yourself.
I don't know if I have enough information. Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry. Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. First up is the 355 Review Fireworks Zoning Ordinance Amendment submitted by Eric Schrader, City Planner. And I don't know if you want to combine that with the second one or just move, do them separate.
Do them separately.
Do it separate, okay. Okay, Eric?
Eric Schrader, City Planner. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission has been reviewing the zoning ordinance for potential changes for fireworks. There was some discussion towards this quite a few months back and then the last two months, two months ago, they had some further discussion and then at their last meeting, they did recommend approval of the proposed amendment that is in front of you. The City of Waterloo's zoning ordinance currently does not specifically list fireworks sales in the ordinance as a permitted use specifically listed, but in the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, it allows for any retail business or service establishment. So fireworks sales, even though not specifically listed, are considered permitted in the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District or less restrictive zoning districts, other commercial districts and industrial districts. The proposed amendment would exclude the sale of fireworks from the C1 Commercial District, so it would no longer be permitted in C1 Commercial Districts. It would allow for fireworks sales in a limited capacity in C2 Commercial Districts. They would not be permitted from temporary structures. They would be permitted from permanent structures, but only when accessory and incidental to an existing retail sales use. So, an example of that, some of the existing businesses that sold fireworks within their existing establishment as just kind of a small component of their sales, Menards, Sam's, there were several others too, but that's kind of the example of that. So, that would be permitted in the C2 Commercial District to continue. And then, otherwise, fireworks sales would be permitted in the M1 Light Industrial District and less restrictive districts, which would include the other industrial zoning classifications. And the provisions in the M1 would provide for that any structure or building used for fireworks sales shall be at least 200 feet from any R District and provided that any temporary structures used for fireworks sales, such as a tent, trailer, cargo container, et cetera, shall be set back at least 25 feet from property lines. So that is the proposed amendment. It was unanimously recommended for approval by the Commission. We're asking for input from the Council and later on in the agenda, there would be action to set a data hearing for the actual amendment. Questions or comments?
Go ahead.
So when you say it would be allowed in stores like Menards and big box stores like that, would they be allowed to have a tent on their premises with it in it? Just in the building?
Just in the building. Yep. As currently proposed to be worded, it specifically allows it in the C2 District within a principal building and not in, like a portable type structure.
Yes, I do have one question. My understanding is that there are a few places out there that are already in existence that would fall under this guideline. Can you give us a little information on that, Eric?
Yeah, so, any existing establishment that sells out of a permanent structure but would not comply with the existing regulations would be grandfathered. This amendment doesn't really address that, but it's already covered by our zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance has an entire section on what's called a legal nonconforming use or commonly referred to as grandfathered. I'm only aware of one establishment that that would cover, the establishment out kind of in front of the crossroads area, I believe it's called Crossroads Fireworks. There was at least one other establishment where they were selling fireworks out of a principal building as the primary use of the building. That site's actually zoned M1 Industrial, so that one would be a permitted use based on the proposed ordinance. And, to my knowledge, any of the other sites where they were selling it within a building was as like incidental to an existing use, like the Menards and Sam's Club, et cetera.
Any other questions? Eric, could you explain the setbacks requirements and how that affects residential property owners that might be in C2 areas or even M1 areas, if there are any?
Yeah, so the C2 areas, there's no setback, but that's, the fireworks sales are limited to incidental there. So, it was our thought process there that if there's just a, you know, a small portion of an existing business that's, has, you know, the example, I believe, like the, a couple of the establishments, Menards, et cetera, that had a, you know, they had probably like a, I don't even know that it would have exceeded 50 square feet of floor space within the existing building, a relatively small portion of their existing operations. So there's no proposed setback for the C2 since it's just incidental sales. The M1, where it can be the principal use, we were proposing that 200-foot setback from residential districts to ensure that there is a little bit of separation there from the residential neighborhoods and this, you know, more intense type of fireworks sales use. And then the 25-foot setback for temporary structures is to address particularly, like from front lines or the street lines, there was some concern for the tents and trailers and cargo structures being pretty close proximity to some of the roads, creating some potential site visibility issues.
And this takes care of that?
It is our expectation that this would address that, yes.
And last summer, I'd probably surmise that most everybody drove around different places in Waterloo and saw these tents. I mean, in some areas, there was two within a, like a shopping center or a, I can just remember going along on the Port Road and seeing a couple of those as well as pods. And this addresses that, then?
This should address a large portion of that. There certainly could be some of those sites that were already zoned M1 Industrial and therefore potentially would be permitted if they meet the 200-foot setback from residential districts and the 25-foot setback from property lines, but a lot of those sites you're mentioning would probably be zoned C2 Commercial.
And one final question, Eric, and that is, how is this enforced?
This, so, the establishments that sell fireworks have to get a, I don't know if it's considered a permit or a license from the state. The city is preempted from doing our own type of permit or license, but we try and obtain from the state who they've issued to. We try and get the companies that are proposing to sell fireworks to do a zoning, kind of a zoning approval checkoff sheet prior to, but if there are, you know, since the city can't issue, require an actual permit or license, if there are some that would get that from the state before we've, you know, found out about them, we'll try and, you know, get that information from the state and then work with those retailers. So, the zoning, the Planning and Zoning Office would be in charge of enforcement of it.
Okay, any, any other questions? Otherwise, Madam City Clerk, I will yield to the Honorable Permanent Mayor Protam, even though I just got elected, Sharon.
And, Mr. Morrissey, that is exactly what you're supposed to do.
No, I yield back the chair to Mayor Protam.
Thank you, and I apologize, I was across the street filling in for the mayor at the County Conference Board. I'm just upset that Mr. Jamison was able to make it over here before me because he was at the same meeting, so, you must have been running.
Anyway, so, is the first section addressed, then, the zoning ordinance amendment, to everyone's satisfaction? And thank you for filling in, Mr. Morrissey? Okay, are you also going to address, then, Mr. Schroeder, the fireworks code amendment?
Sure can. Eric Schrader, City Planner, again. So this is an amendment to the Code of Ordinances. An amendment to the Code of Ordinances does not require a hearing that we're proposing to run these through coherently, so we're doing the work session at the same time and assuming the zoning ordinance amendment hearing date is set under the consent agenda later tonight. We would then bring this ordinance at the same time as the hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment would come. So, this amendment to the existing Code of Ordinances sections governing fireworks has a section that will reference zoning, so just noting that sale of fireworks needs to be in compliance with the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance. There's a section regarding enforcement and compensation, and I'll just read it now. During the annual period in which fireworks sales are allowed, this section may be enforced by police reserve officers who shall have authority to document violations and issue citations. And said officers may also respond to related nuisance calls to the greatest extent possible. Funding for such enforcement activities shall be obtained by the application made by the fire chief or his designee to the grant program administered by the State Fire Marshal under Iowa Code 100.19. And it's my understanding that the Police Department has just asked that the word "reserve" be removed from there and just say "police officers," which would cover whether it's a regular officer or a reserve officer. And then the other section is governing the use of fireworks, not, not the sales of that. And there's, I know there's been a lot of discussion and debate on that in the past, so this proposed amendment as worded would open up the use of fireworks, and I'll just read that. "It should be unlawful for any person to use or explode any consumer fireworks or display fireworks within the corporate limits of the City of Waterloo, except on July 3rd, 4th, and 5th of each year between the hours of noon and 11:00 PM on July 4th and between the hours of noon and 10:00 PM on July 3rd and July 5th. This section shall not apply to novelty fireworks as defined by Iowa Code."
And so, therefore, New Year's is off the table, that's, it's gone.
As currently proposed, this would not open it up on New Year's, correct?
Great. Is there a State Fire Marshal fund? Did we apply to that last year or was it in existence last year?
So, as I understand it, and others may be able to speak to this better than I can, but as I understand it, the, in the enactment of the legislation that allowed fireworks, it provided for the fund, but it's my understanding that I don't think any dollars have been allocated to the fund at this time.
Were licenses supposed to go to that fund? Is that what's supposed to be included there?
I believe so.
Okay, questions?
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
Also, in response to your, your question there for Eric Schrader, the, the state law, which is quoted in here for 100.19, it is, it talks about it in six point A, B, A and B, and it deals with the Consumer Fireworks Fee Fund, and then the State Fire Marshal shall establish local fire protection. And so, it's all played out in there that that is where that money is supposed to be going.
Is supposed to be.
Yeah, and so this is just calling upon the enforcement and our city to make use of what the law allows us to do. And I, I wish Chief Treloar was here because I had talked to him about this, and I don't think that Chief Treloar has any objections to this. It's just a matter of if the State Fire Marshal is going to actually put money into that fund, is my understanding of it.
And we don't know that, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we can ask Chief.
And the only other thing that, there's two things, and one is that in the violation, this ups the, the fine from 250 to 375. And, and the other thing is that I hope that we can put in there, rather than maybe enforced, this section shall be enforced, rather than maybe by the police.
Where are you seeing the rates, Mr. Morrissey?
In F.
F, I missed that one, yep. It is proposed to change it from 250 to 375.
Okay, okay. And then, okay.
I just would like to see that, that language, I don't know if...
Under G, are you talking about under G?
Yes, under G.
It says U, okay.
During the annual period in which fireworks sales are allowed, this section, I would just suggest that it should, we could put in "shall be enforced" by the Police Department who, and then it goes on from there.
Well, and then also, do you want the, in the third line there, and said officers "shall" also respond to related nuisance calls?
Yes, yes.
So, so change both of those?
Yes, because the "may" was in reference to using the police reserve rather than the regular police.
Gotcha.
And I don't, I, I know that Major Leibold is there if he has anything he might want to say about that, Madam Chairperson.
Okay. Mr. Schroeder, do you have any objection to the change? Mr. Schroeder? No? Okay. Yes?
Joe Leibold, Police Department, and I would just use caution with the word "shall" and maybe can talk, talk to the city attorney. "Shall" is a legal word and has legal implications upon us that we may not be able to fulfill. So I would, before I changed it from "may" to "shall," I'd at least can talk to Dave Zola for the city attorney.
And you will do that, then?
I can, or this party can, it doesn't matter to me either way.
Okay. Great, thank you. Questions? Yes, Ms. Klein?
I agree. "Shall" to me sounds like we're, we're ordering the police what to do in each specific case, and we don't want to get into that, I don't think. But also, I have a question about the money. How much did the city receive last year from fines for this?
I don't...
Do we know? Any?
Did we assess fines to anyone?
I'm not aware of any fines.
Who would know that?
Check with the city attorney.
Chief Treloar, would he know, or Ms. Weedner?
Oh, and she doesn't, she's here!
So you're not aware of any fines?
I'm just saying I don't know one way or the other.
Okay, okay.
In the past, the chief has said there have not been any citations issued. I don't know about last year, but previous to that, I know that was the answer.
Okay.
So I'd say it's zero.
Mrs. Klein?
Are we, I mean, I know there were violations last year, I heard them going off in my neighborhood. And we had a lot of complaints, so, is this just all moot? Is this just, we're just writing this up to have it on the books and it's not going to ever be? Or what?
Yes, to that one, if you will.
I can take a stab at it.
Oh, God, don't do that.
There's been a lot of discussion and debate on the use part of it and if it should be allowed and when it should be allowed. There's been some thought process that if it is opened up, even if for maybe a relatively small window of opportunity, that will provide an opportunity for those that want to shoot off fireworks but would prefer to do so legally, to give them that window of opportunity. And it, there's some thought process that a large portion of the populace would comply with that. So, thereby significantly decreasing the amount of violations and thereby making it a little more feasible to actually enforce the violations that are occurring since they're going to be a little less frequent. But, you know, the Police Department can try and elaborate further, but, you know, sure, you can hear fireworks going off, you know there's violations, but then figuring out exactly where they're coming from is the first problem. Getting there in a timely period to where you can then prove exactly who did a violation becomes a very difficult endeavor. So, is this still going to be a difficult section to enforce? Yes, but it's, the hope that it at least is a little easier than what it was.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
The other part about that, Eric and Major Leibold, is that by adding and putting in this G section, the part regarding nuisance calls, a nuisance call does not require, is my understanding, that you actually see the person who is doing it, but it goes to the property where it was occurring, if I'm not mistaken, Major Leibold and Eric. Because we did add fireworks under nuisances in the city council here, did.
I haven't read that, but yes, you are correct. If it's under the, the code, the nuisance ordinance, after so many trips there, they could be cited as a nuisance property. I haven't read the exact language of the change, but that would be correct, yes. The property owner could be cited regardless if they're the ones lighting them off or not. So if there's a group of kids in the backyard launching fireworks all week long and we keep going to the same house over and over again, the property owner could be cited.
And, Mr. Leibold, in response to Ms. Klein's comment, you are going to try to enforce that. I don't, I can't see that that would be the problem.
It's a very difficult law to enforce.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a very difficult law to enforce, like they alluded to. To know somebody's shooting them off and prove it are two entirely different standards.
Gotcha, but you're going to try.
We'll do our best.
Good. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
And I'm sorry I got here a little bit late, and not to be putting words in your mouth, but in the past, that's exactly what the chief said, that you folks are pretty busy doing other, much more important, much more potentially threatening issues you're dealing with in fireworks. And, so I think in the past, both the chief, both chiefs, were in favor of some limited fireworks, if I'm not mistaken. And I think that was the reason for it, is rather than all this stuff going on, button it down into a one or two or three day deal. And I think that's what other communities are doing too. And then there won't be all this overflow at each end that's a problem for the vets and the animal owners and that kind of stuff. So, I mean, I think it seems to be some kind of a compromise in the middle. But, and I know this isn't for you, but something as simple as grass clippings in the street, I mean, we can't enforce that because we can't confirm who did it, or so they say. So, I, yeah, I don't envy you folks dealing with this at all.
But I have faith in you. You'll get them all.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other question?
Yes, sir.
Major Leibold? Okay, if this was to pass a city council G there that allowed the chief, the fire chief to submit this grant to pay for this, could that not add additional, that's for lack of a better word, enforcement to fireworks for people that really felt this has not been enforced?
If the grant was written such that we could maybe apply for overtime funds in advance, or, yeah, probably in advance, where we'd get, say, 25 hours of overtime out of it, yes, then we could increase the enforcement of it by having officers work overtime on the specific nights. Keep in mind, you're talking July 3rd, 4th, and 5th, so we're, have trouble staffing the 4th anyway, it's a holiday, it's time and a half, so it'd be double time. There's a lot of contractual issues there, but yes, if they were going to provide overtime funds in advance, like a grant type process, yes, then we could use that to increase our staffing.
Thanks.
And it appears like we should ask the fire chief if they're going to go after those grant funds, right? Other questions? Okay, good job, thank you. Okay, is Mr. Knutson in the audience? I don't see him. Is there anyone here from the engineer's office to address the increase in stormwater fees? Or are we a couple minutes early?
Eric's going to go.
Okay, okay. We'll check.
I thought you could.
We always have.
Okay.
I brought...
We actually just did with the last...
Do you guys want them?
What was that, before time? Hello, Mr. Knutson?
Thank you.
Okay, turn it over to our city engineer, talking about the review of an ordinance to increase the stormwater fees.
Good afternoon, Council, Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. Passing out, or Mr. Foyce is passing out a copy of what you should have had for the, in your packets. I'm not going to read through everything, I just want to hit some of the highlights and hopefully answer some of your questions. Our current stormwater fee was adopted December of 2010. Since that time, there has not been any increases in our stormwater fees. Currently, the stormwater fee pays for storm, their stormwater management program, cleaning storm drains, enforcement of our stormwater regulations, public education and outreach, storm sewer system studies, drainage way studies, stormwater staff, and the city's annual IDNR stormwater permit. Currently, when they set the fee in 2010, currently, everybody is paying $2.75 a month. Residential gets charged once, non-residentials are charged $2.75 for the base, and then for every 5,000 square feet of impervious area, they get charged an additional $2.75 a month. At the bottom of page one, you can kind of, it shows, table shows what our current fee is compared to other cities. You can see, out of the, out of the largest cities that I could find information on, we're almost at the bottom, as far as what we charge. The other thing to notice is that just last year, the City of Cedar Falls, when they increased their stormwater fee, they added a 5% automatic increase each of the next five years. One of the things that we all found out, or noticed, or learned after last year's rains in the fall, were all the stormwater problems that we had all over the city. So, trying to figure out how to deal with these, there's basically two ways to do this. One is to either pay for it out of capital dollars, bonding, or to increase our fees. Those are the two things, two choices we're faced with. Really going with a, a no increase, again, there's three possibilities that I looked at, but the, or many possibilities, but the three that I looked at, the first one, the no increase, again, it pays for everything that we need to do, but it doesn't allow us to build the big basin-wide multimillion dollar projects that we need to do. I also looked at effectively doubling the fee. That brings in a lot of money, a lot of revenue for the city. The downside is, I don't think we can spend it all every year. And I, the intent of this is not to generate a large pot of money sitting there. And I, the intent of this is not to generate a large pot of money sitting there as reserves. We want to try to spend it as we get it so that we're always doing something and not just generating this big pot of money to sit around. So then it came down to what's a, what seemed like a nice even number. And then I like round numbers personally, so looking at a $1.25 a month increase brings us up to $4 a month. That gets us enough money to go ahead and be able to pay for these large basin wide improvements that we need, along with doing all the other things that I mentioned earlier. All the, all the programs, all the responsibilities that we have now, plus building more in the future. Table two at the bottom of the, of the second page there kind of shows, will shows what each resident or each property type would pay residential or non-residential for 2019. Along with that, I am look, I'm also asking council to approve an increase in each of the next four years of 25 cents a month in order to pay for, or to continue to pay for these large programs to cover inflation because we do have personnel costs that come out of the current funds. We need to cover that. The interesting thing is when you go back and look, if the city had done either an automatic 3% or a 5% increase from 2010 till now, as I showed in there, we'd either be at $3.60 or $4.25 for 2019. So the $4 that I'm asking for right now is right in line with what folks would have been paying had we had automatic increases all along. Couple of things, appendix A, and I apologize how bad and how hard it is. It's hard to get a city map to fit real well on a, on an 11 by 17 piece of paper. But the big thing to note is all the orange dots that you see on there. And again, they're a little hard to see, but those are all the big drainage basin or big drainage projects basin wide that we have to do all over town. There's about $30 million worth of projects sitting out there. And that doesn't include small ones like Lynn Bud or some of the others where we're going to do maybe a block of storm sewer or something to fix a localized problem. These are just the big basins drainage why, or big drainage basins. Appendix B, and this is the one you want to kind of focus on. This one shows the list of projects that I would propose to do over the next 10 years. And you can see it attacks some of the ones that we had issues with last fall, such as Upton and Sunnyside and Delane. It also goes after some of the things that we know in the next 10 years we need to be doing, such as the Ridgeway Box Culvert there at Ridgway and Ninth, drainage improvements to Pleasant Valley, Allen Hospital and No Name. Those are areas, and Verden Creek, excuse me, as well. Those are areas that we think we're going to see more developments. We want to make sure that we're prepared and ready to go to meet developments needs in the future as well. The one thing to notice at the very bottom of this sheet, it talks, it shows, it shows the amount of cost that we're going to sustain over these project, or over these 10 years. Some years we're running a deficit, some years we aren't. I tried not to get too carried away with that, although our CFO probably won't like that. I tried to, tried to make sure we were close. But again, these are planning level estimates on things that we know we need to do and we'll have to adjust accordingly each, each year as we look at this. But the other thing to notice is that after 2023, I am still looking at a 25 cent a month increase out to 2029. Now, I do not want the council to commit to that. Those, those out, outlying five years at this point will come back, all come back in 2023 to share with council how we've done, what we've done, and give a better idea of is the money that we're spending, is it enough? Do we need more? Do we need less? Maybe we won't need that increase in the outer five years. But I just want council to be aware that I've based this 10 year program on going out that 10 years and asking for that increase out there.
Clarify that again, Jamie.
Okay, so.
Did you build in that?
I did build that in, in there. Into the, in the outer five years.
Yeah, it is reflected.
It is, it is reflected in there. Now again, in 2023, I'll come back. We'll just, we'll have more discussions about this. If we don't need, we may not need it. I just am trying to plan for it. Again, because we have personnel costs coming out of the stormwater fee, I have no idea what those are going to do in 10 years or even five years or even next year, to be honest with you. So we need to take that into account and, and costs are just continuing to go up.
In the top three, Upton, Sunnyside and Delaney, those are the ones you had the most trouble with last fall.
Those were the ones that I have the most trouble with last fall, yes.
But this looks like we're not going to have any solution to those problems until 2020, right?
Correct.
Well, and in fact, Sunnyside wouldn't be until 2021.
You are correct.
Or 2022.
A lot of.
That's the soonest we can get to them, huh?
Part of it is designing it. Part of it is we have to buy property in a lot of these basins. Upton, for example, the one that we're looking at, there, we're going to have to buy property. Sunnyside, we're going to have to buy property.
Is that reflected in study design construction?
Yep, that's reflected in there. That, the intent is that we will always be buying property, doing design and constructing something on different drainage ways. So basically, we're just moving on down the road. So the first year, we might be buying property for this one. The second year, we're constructing that, what we bought property on earlier, but we're designing something else for the future. And it's just going to be an ongoing cycle.
But there was nothing in the pipeline prior to your projections in 2019?
No.
No? Wow.
The only place that it is, is it is the money, the projects have been identified in the capital improvements program. They have never, we only bond for so much money, as you all know. They have never risen to the point where they have been able to be funded currently.
And this will not, this will allow us to do the projects without depending on CIP funds?
That is the hope. Now that, that doesn't mean that if we get some money to start with in the CIP, and again, I've asked for money in the CIP this year, we aren't going to have enough to be able to construct anything in 2019, for the most part.
Or much time.
Or much time. But there is hopefully, again, some money in the CIP to get us started, some seed money, so to speak, to get us started with some of the design and on some of these projects that we have been working on. Now, Delane is one of those that we've been working on for several years. And Wayne can talk to you, answer questions about that if you have specifics. But again, there's, for all of these projects citywide, there's never really been a focused effort to take care of the problems.
But so does some of the money reflected in this attachment come from CIP? Not just that?
No, this is just, all of this is just, is just for the stormwater fee increase.
So if you're getting a CIP money, that'll just allow us to move some of this up a little more?
That's exactly right.
Okay, okay. Ms. Klein.
I, I can't tell you how excited I am about this. I am a.
I just wish it was tomorrow.
I am a fiscal conservative, I am. But one of the problems I've always thought the city had was delayed maintenance. You know, you just can't do that because you're not saving a single penny when you do that. And we've run around putting our finger in the leaks all the time, but never really fixing the leaks. And these poor folks that we went out to see this year, my gosh, their basements, their insurances are canceling them because the rainwater just attacks them at every rainy season. And, and between the storm sewer and the waste coming in some of their basements, we've got to begin. And I believe this is just such a smart way to do it. And, and I love it that, that Mr. Knutson is, is planning, is getting a plan on paper. I just think it's a wonderful way.
That's because he's now the full-time city engineer.
He's doing a great job and I support this.
He wouldn't have done it as interim, I don't think.
I support this wholeheartedly. I think it shows vision that he has got the 25 cents in the back of his mind, but he's not going to come to us until that, in 2023. And then it's kind of going to be on a wait and see, do we need it? Do we not need it? He's not just a run and gun kind of guy with the taxes.
I would agree. Anybody that puts off deferred maintenance is, is foolish.
We're paying for it. And the poor residents are paying for it in their way too. Shouldn't have ever happened.
And I should ask you this in public so that I don't embarrass my, or I should ask you in private. So I don't embarrass myself publicly. This is going to take care of the basements that have the waste and the.
No.
That's a storm sewer.
That's the sanitary sewer.
Sanitary sewer.
That's a separate issue from what we're talking about here.
This is just the water in the basement.
This is just the water that falls out of the sky.
This is poor Mr. Hoffman with his produce farm getting absolutely flooded out.
The folks.
He's going to have to leave Waterloo if we don't do something about that because he can't afford it.
So Steve's the one that's got to take care of the waste in the basement. We've got to do both.
That is, we need to do both. And it's in taking care of the waste in the base, the sewer backups, that's going to be a combined thing between Steve and I because certain areas in 15 and 16 where we did the drain tile disconnect, those people as far, and I don't want to put Steve's words in Steve's mouth, but I don't think those people have had the problems with backups. Where we've had is now we have all these sump pump drains dumping out to the street and people complaining about ice buildup in the winter. One of the things that Wayne has been talking to me about is looking at putting in a drain tile line in some of these areas so people can connect their sump pumps, get it underground so it's not dumping out onto the street. It's causing ice problems for public works. It solves a lot of.
Pumps will be addressed through this program.
We certainly can look at that, yes. It's not specifically included. No, but that's relatively, it's a much smaller cost than what we're looking at here.
But it would be sense to do it when you're doing this, right?
That's something that we certainly do and Wayne's pushing me to get to that so that we can do it. One of them is Cardinal, Cardinal Drive that we know we have issues, but we can put, we can put drain tile in there and fix a lot of problems. But it's, again, it's, it's money and bodies and, and I've got to have both, so.
But you can do it in conjunction with.
Until we get.
Right.
Funding in place.
And weren't those incidental, those were incidental and unexpected results from the disconnect, right?
I wasn't directly involved in those when that was started. I would, I would like to think that they were talked about, but I don't know that there was ever a good solution that came out of it. Obviously, funding plays a part in everything.
Cause I know just recently I've received some emails from people in my ward.
Yes.
Complaining about the very issue of ice. And I've gone out and looked at some of that.
It is, it's, it's something that happens every year and Wayne spends a lot of time with, with Maria and code enforcement working on that, so.
Oh, yes, they've been very, I have to commend them. They've been very good.
Thank you. Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Knutson, which no name creek is this? Aren't there several in Waterloo?
This is actually, I want to get this right, Wade. This is no name from Airline South.
Airline.
Airline Highway South.
Okay, and I see that, and being Brother Prokill here, if I might, five of these 11 are in Ward Three. I also note that Verden Creek, if it's the same Verden Creek ideas that have been brought up to me repeatedly since I've been on city council, those have been on hold for what, 20 years now?
This particular one is where it'd be north of McDonald's, where Menards was going to go several years ago. We were going to build it for Menards. They didn't come, so we stopped building it. We have the money to purchase the property. We just need to move ahead with construction. The problem is, once we put this in, it kind of locks how the layout for the development goes out there. So the idea is, we want to try to let some of that development happen right now and be prepared here four or five years out. But we don't want to put something in there and then have, have to have the developer change it or we have to change it five years down the line. So we're trying, I'm trying to be smart about it. Best laid plans, that sort of thing. But it, that's the one that, that you do get a lot of comments about. I know that, Mr. Morrissey.
Yes, and, and the people out there have been waiting for years and years. And now, at my ward meeting, I get to tell them unhappily that construction isn't going to start till 2023 if this plan is approved. And to me, Mr. Knutson, that's unacceptable, given the amount of time that's gone by. And I would ask that that be moved up to as soon as your timetable would allow. I also know that the Allen Hospital drainage has been an issue for many years.
Many years.
Along Donald Street there. So the, those are a couple that I would ask that you please consider moving up. The other, the other thing is that when I got a, a phone call specifically one in person wanting to know, okay, two things. First of all, are these increases primarily going to raise people's salaries? And then the second thing was, how are we going to see how this money is used? How are they physically and visually going to be able to see what this money is, what the end result is?
I know what you're asking. There will, there is money, again, because we have people, we're paying people's salaries out of the stormwater fee that's been going, that's going on now. So yes, there is some that is going to go to people's salaries. It's just the way it is. But what I've tried to do with this, right now, we generate 300,000, 400,000 a year for construction that we could spend. What this addition will do is add another 700,000 or 800,000 or so depending on, for construction as well. So we'll be looking at having a million dollars every year for design, property acquisition, construction. How soon is, this Joanna indicated, it's going to be maybe two years before we have something tangible that is built, that people will be able to see it. Because we do have to design things, we do have to buy property. So it's just going to take a little bit for them to actually see the results, but we're working on it.
With road use, there is an oversight committee and that's something people can see because it's above ground. All of this is going to be below ground, so they're not going to see. So in some way, you might want to devise maybe your reporting process to the public as to how you spend it and the progress. And we're going to want to know the progress on all of these. And if I may, how did you go about prioritizing these projects?
The easiest way that I can explain it is I looked, tried to look at from 18, who had the biggest, who got hit the worst in 2018. The other part of it is, is just the sheer number of people that are affected. Because obviously, the more people that we can help, the better, the better the bang for the buck. So that's where Verden Creek tributary is needed. But it doesn't, it right now helps a limited number of folks versus Upton or Sunnyside or Delane or things like that. That's the, the base reason as to how I got where I am and those projects are up front.
Need and population.
Yep. Cause again, I can spend a lot of money to put something in over here that only helps one or two people, or I can spend the same amount of money over here that helps 500.
And I understand you saying that development, especially in the Verden Creek area, might advance this timetable.
And that's exactly right. And that's the other com, that's the other comment I wanted to make about this. Just because it says it's 2023, Councilman Morrissey, if we have a development that comes up a year from now, we're going to have to move much quicker, whether it's bond funds or, or moving projects around in the stormwater fee. We're going to have to just find the money to do that because we've got a development coming in. So there's, there are, this isn't written in stone, but this is to give you guys an idea of where I want to see it go and the big, big projects that need to be done in the near future, anyway.
And to Mr. Morrissey's concern, which I support and appreciate, that's an area that I think in talking to Mr. Anderson is hopefully a prime area for development. And so hopefully that Verden Creek area will move up more rapidly because of that.
Yeah, and that's one of those, Mr. Morrissey, that's one of them I struggled with. Because again, we know it's been out there a long time. But again, like I said, the minute we build what we want to build, and we know what we need to build out there, the minute we do it and somebody, a developer comes in and says, well, I wish you'd have done this. this or that or the other thing, or can we move this drainage way 100 feet north? Somebody's going to pay for that, and usually, or, you know, it's going to probably end up being the city as part of the development agreement. So again, it's, I'm trying to meet everybody's expectations and, and try to meet future growth and, and try to be a little bit flexible in this, but I know I can't make everybody happy.
Madam Chairperson.
Yes.
Well, what, what I would like to add to that, though, Mr. Knutson, is that people in that area that are in the Verden Creek watershed there, that are affected by this now, are very well aware that other people aren't moving there because of this problem. So as long as this problem exists, that's going to retard our ability to develop and have residential additions out in that area until this gets done. So I think that that is and should be the primary moving force, other than the fact that these people have endured long enough in that area, and they should be prioritized. And then the, the second thing that I just wanted to add is that I know, in reading through your documents, you talked about that third proposal where it was like three, raising it $3 and stuff like that. And one of the things that you had mentioned in there, and probably the most significant, is if you do that, have that, and have all that money, where are you going to get the people to make use of the money?
That's exactly right.
And the same thing, to me, applies with the, the one that you are asking us to approve, is that if we have all that money, additional money there, wouldn't it benefit the city to hire more workers to do these projects quicker?
These are projects that, quite frankly, we're going to be designed by an outside consulting firm, and they're going to be, these things are, Sunnyside, for example, that's $5 million for construction there is what we're looking at. That's not something that city forces will be able to do, so we're going to have to construct that over a number of years, even with this increase. So again, most of this work I envision being constructed by outside forces and not city forces. So again, there's only so many contractors and so much time with the weather and things like that, and working in drainage ways, the weather's a big factor because it's wet down there. So I just don't think we can spend all of the money that we would get by doubling the stormwater fee at this point. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Knutson, if we approve the increase, that's not necessarily approving your timeline. I don't know that that even needs to come to the council, does it?
No, and I, I just put it in there so that council would understand.
No, I appreciate that.
Where I was, because I didn't want to get up here and go, well, where are you going to spend the money? At least this way, you have an idea of the projects, and again, they can move forward or backwards in time a little bit, that's not the end dollar or bill.
It's going to possibly change.
But it's, I at least wanted to show where we are now and how we can get there in 10 years and, and the projects we can get accomplished.
Any other questions?
You know, just to reiterate, I, I regret the big jump, because these should have come in smaller increments for the citizens so that it doesn't come as such a big shock. But I so much appreciate the forward thinking that's coming out of your office, and I know the citizens are eagerly watching tonight. I've been called several times today about how they're going to be tuning in on this. And, you know, if you've got water in your basement of any kind, I know the wastewater is worse, but if your basement floods and.
Oh, it's awful.
It's, it's just awful.
There's one who's been there, yeah, it's awful.
So thank you so much.
Other questions? Good job, I appreciate this. This increase, give me a timeline on this.
The increase then is Kelly's got a plan to be on council next Monday. You should have, is part of your council packet, the resolution that you'll see come next Monday. We can go through three readings, there's no hurry on this, we've talked to the Waterworks. These will start with the April 1st bill, that's just based on how the Waterworks billing is going.
Even if we go through the three readings.
Even with going through all three readings, so there's no issues with that, but that will start April 1st, and then if you approve the 25 cent a year increase, or 25 cent a month increase, those will start January 1st of the following year.
Okay. And again, I encourage everybody to come out because so many people were impacted by this, please let us know, appreciate your input.
All right.
Okay, thank you to everyone, thank you, Mr. Knutson.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, a second? All in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned. Now, I will say that we're supposed to have our Housing Authority meeting, and the director of the Housing Authority is not here.
Yes, I am.
Yes, she is.
Oh, she is healthcare.
She's just waiting for you guys to speak.